The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of prayer. Thank you.
Council President Fire.
Here.
Alderman Wadua.
Here.
Alderwoman Calderon.
Here.
Alderman Bruckner.
Here.
Alderwoman Fliss.
Here.
Alderman Damian asked to be excused. Mayor Tutai.
Here. Telephonic meeting, none.
The meeting has been properly, excuse me, properly posted and noticed.
Thank you. Public hearings, budget, public hearing notice. Is there anyone that would like to speak for the 2026 City of St. Francis budget? Come up to the microphone, please. Rick, I know we don't pay you, but can you make sure that microphone's on for him?
And then I just need-
Got you a new job.
I just need you to state your name and address for the record.
Hello, testing, one, two, three.
Hello, my name is Marty Sahorsky, and I live at thirty-five, thirty-five East Civier, right behind us here. I just had a couple of questions about the budget for 2026, and I want to know, I'll direct this to Mark, how much funding is in the budget for the development of the triangle in 2026?
Yes.
So, the triangle is in TID five, so TID five is separate from this budget. So when you see the, when you see the budget where it shows TID five, TID five does not provide, the only expenses that are in TID five are the expenses where we've already had existing projects. The triangle property is not an existing project. So if there were any incentive payments for previous projects, they would be in the expenditure portion of TID five or Fund Forty-Six within the budget. So the triangle property, there is no expenditures within. We have no development agreement with the developer on TID five. They haven't submitted a detailed PUD. They've only submitted an initial PUD, so we really don't even have the details of the development yet.
Okay. So, and then, so do you have a number for, you know, that you're putting in the TIF?
Again, we don't, we don't, we're so early in the process on that development that we don't have a detailed PUD. We haven't started negotiations with the developer on any development for the triangle property.
Okay, well, given that we're really early in the process, I think my rest of my questions are kind of, are kind of premature, so I'm going to hold that off for-
We'll know more in January or February when they bring it to the Planning Commission.
Okay.
So.
And I'll have, I'm going to speak in a couple of minutes for the public comments, and I have a few, I have a little bit more to say at that, but that's, those aren't budget-related, so.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at the public hearing for the 2026 City of St. Francis budget? Is there anyone else that would like to speak for the 2026 City of St. Francis budget? One last time, is there anyone that'd like to speak for the 2026 City of St. Francis budget? Public hearing is closed. Presentation, none. Citizen comments?
Um, Marty, did you want to come up and speak again? Sorry.
Wish I'd just kept you there, sorry.
Okay. Want me to say my name again?
No, I think I can remember. Eh, it's questionable.
Okay, so I'm here speaking again in opposition to the current development plan of the triangle. So I have reviewed the 2017 Future Development Strategic Planning Report, and the first thing I'm going to say about that is the word apartment in the, does not appear in the thirty-seven pages, at all, zero, none, zada, niche. So, um, we, the Community Fair Triangle, we now have a group that's opposing this, this apartment, high-rise apartment, do not want a plan that is primarily apartments and parking spaces. That is too valuable of a piece of land to put apartments and parking spaces there. So, and especially, I don't want a parking lot that drains into my backyard, because I'm over there, you know, the first house on Civier, and you're planning a hundred-spaced parking lot, and I looked at the grade of that, and the grade slopes down, and it goes right into the back of my, my lot. I don't want that. So our group has also decided that we don't want any high-rise apartment buildings. We don't want any. So, you know, and we talked about this, is what really, why are we bothered by that so much? And it has to do with the fact that, that we prefer condominiums, or townhomes, or townhouses, or something that people have to buy into that, you know, something that people have to buy into the triangle, because then they'll keep it better, and they'll have an investment in it, and it'll be more long-term. So, I want to just emphasize, we're not against development of the triangle, we're against this development of the triangle.
Your two minutes is up, but I'll give you another thirty seconds, because I know you got a whole page there.
Okay, okay. So, just in a nutshell, we want a downtown St. Francis, St. Francis Commons, a destination, as, as what's pointed out in here. And, and the other thing I'll ask, too, very briefly, is that pursuant to the 2015-2016 Comprehensive Plan, the public comments, public comments should be allowed at Planning Commission meetings when we discuss development of the triangle, because that's in the 2015-2016 Comprehensive Plan. So I reviewed all of those, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Marty.
And I also like to thank you for all your work that you're doing on this.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, if I could read your handwriting, I could tell it's William, thirty-nine-hundred South Kirkwood. Sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is William Girloff, thirty-nine-hundred South Kirkwood. Being a resident of St. Francis for forty years, and a homeowner here for thirty-nine years, I have seen lots of things change in this area about a week. As it ever come across, the elected city officials and developers do have a development of single-family homes. Divide the existing triangle property up for a subdivision with single-family homes, as well as small retail, green space, like a town square. This way, we as a city would have the benefit of property tax revenue, and the people in these houses would stay longer in this area than the residents of apartments as they come and go. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's all that's on the list, Mayor?
Is there anyone else that would like to speak for Citizen Comments?
Sure. Thank you. Careful.
Can you please state your name and address, please?
Sure. Mariano Schifalacqua, I have to spell it for you.
No, that's okay. I know where to find it, Mr. Schifalacqua.
Yeah, I do.
It's just easier to call you-
Just don't ask me to repeat it.
Anyway, I wasn't planning on speaking, but some of my neighbors have spoke, so I thought, well, I'm referring to the triangle property that I'm, you're all familiar with. I bought my lot in 2014. At that time, I reached out to the developer who owned that lot at that time, who I knew, and I said, what are you planning there? And it was always a town square type of development. Two, three stories, maybe some condos, you know, typical town square that St. Francis really needed, and I thought that was great. So over the years, I've been continuously asking and told the same thing. In fact, even last summer, I talked to a city administrator and said, yeah, that's what's being proposed. And now suddenly, we have a high-rise apartment buildings. And this is so out of character with what we've been told and what St. Francis needs. Do we really need more apartment buildings? Or do we need long-term residents who will stay here and contribute to the community? So why aren't we looking at townhomes, condominiums, some small retail, that type of thing? Town square, public space for everybody, for the whole community. Let me remind you that this isn't a developer-owned property. This is a community-owned property. We all own it. We bought it. We should developing this for our benefit, not for some out-of-state developer and their investors and partners. We should be looking out for the citizens of St. Francis.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Thank, thank you for coming and speaking. Thank you, sir. All right, moving on. Consent agenda, is there any alderperson, like, anything removed?
Good evening, Mayor. I would like the Finance Committee meeting removed for our later agenda item, and the rest of it I would submit for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Recommendation of action from committees? I'm sorry. Minutes of the Finance Committee meeting held November fourth, 2025. Sean? Okay, Mark and Paul?
Wait, we need to place on file the minutes?
Wait, so there would be two action items. One would be the, the approval of the minutes-
And then the approval of the budget.
So I'll recommend the approval of the minutes from the February, from the November meeting, and then the approval of the budget.
Two separate motions, yes.
I'll second the first, first motion.
So it's to place the minutes on file from the Finance Committee?
You have a second?
Yep.
Yep.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it.
And then for the second item would be approval of the 2026 financial budget.
I will second.
Okay, and the amount of twelve million, six eighty-one, nine thirty-two?
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it.
Can we approve the tax levy as well? As part of the, outside of the budget, or it's, it's part of the budget? Okay. All right.
So we're good. Recommendation of action from committees, commissions, and boards. Action to be taken from the Licensing Committee meeting held December second, 2025. Don?
Licensing Committee this evening, we're looking for beverage operator licenses for EMT Plennis. He was denied for application issues, and we're looking for approval for Rebecca Varley.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it.
That's all from Licensing.
Thank you, Don. Action to be taken from Finance, none. Action to be taken from the Bargaining Committee meeting, December second, 2025.
Mayor, upon recommendation of the Bargaining Committee, I move to approve the collective bargaining agreement with International Association of Firefighters, Local Two Seven One Seven, twenty-twenty-six through twenty-twenty-eight.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you, Debbie. Action to be taken from the Board of Public Works, none. Action to be taken from Planning Commission, none. Resolution and ordinances. Resolution regarding non-represented employees' wages and salaries. Mark?
This is an annual resolution that we do just prior to the end of the year, so that non-represented employees will get any wage increases for 2026. The positions reflect two percent as of December nineteenth, 2025, and a one percent wage increase as of June nineteenth, 2026. As you note on the, on the resolution, the police chief position is currently vacant, so that may have to be updated once that hiring occurs. The only other change to the wages and salary is the Public Works Superintendent. That wage increased by six thousand dollars from last year based on Digger's, the responsibility of doing Digger's Hotline. We do not have a contract with Digger's Hotline, and the Public Works Superintendent is now doing all the locations for public utilities as part of the job description.
I'll move to introduce and adopt the resolution regarding non-represented employees' wages and salaries.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Discussion items with possible action. Twenty-eight thirty, East Layton Avenue, residential lease. Mark?
We, we purchased this property earlier this summer. There is a tenant still in the lower unit. It's a duplex, but the upper unit is vacant. The lower unit is an elderly couple. They would like to have an extension of their month-to-month lease until April thirtieth of next year to be able to move out of the building.
I guess the question I have is, as far as we're tearing that building down?
We're going to tear it down after they vacate.
Right. Have we, like, lumped that together with other buildings that we're looking-
Well, we will, we'll lump it together with the former neighborhood bar and the house on, wait, no, twenty, what is it, twenty-eight eleven and twenty-eight oh seven?
Do those all together?
We'll do, we'll-
In April of-
Well, after, I, the, the fire department, police department typically like to use, use these facilities as training facilities, so it probably would be late summer, early fall, when we actually tear them down.
I'll make a motion to extend that lease through the end of April.
Second. Any further dis, excuse me, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Appointments to committees, commissions, and boards, none. Correspondence with possible action?
Letter dated November twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five, from Deputy Clerk Treasurer Gagnon regarding election inspectors for twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven. As Wisconsin State statutes state, the mayor and common council must appoint election inspectors for two-year terms commencing on January first of an even year and ending on December thirty-first of an odd year. Inspectors appointed in December twenty-twenty-five shall serve a two-year term ending in twenty-twenty-seven. All appointees are nonpartisan unless noted. It is my recommendation to appoint the following as election inspectors, and I'm not going to read through the list that's she included. And the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-seven Board of Canvas is Annie Kersity Clerk, Rebecca Gagnon Deputy City Clerk, Kelly Fissler, and Mark Johnsrude as the alternate.
I'll move to approve the election inspections, inspectors for twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven, and the members of the Board of Canvas.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Unfinished business, none. Other business, none. Department heads, Captain Blunt?
First things first, knock on the wood, but right before the holidays here, we're back to full staff in the Patrol Division, which obviously is the most important division in the PED. Everybody's back from their family leaves, which is good. The biggest thing, I think I emailed everybody on the, up there, on the council, but the City of St. Francis took second place out of twenty-eight communities across the entire nation for our National Night Out, so we are two out of twenty-eight. A lot of years we placed number one, but this year we fell a little short, and we were second out of twenty-eight communities, again, throughout the country. And lastly, we're doing our third annual Shop with a Cop on Sunday, December fourteenth. That's going to be at the Meyer on Howell Avenue in the city of Oak Creek. A little plug for Meyer for those of you that shop there, they were very generous, again. They're giving our department a thousand dollars to shop with the five needy children in the St. Francis School District. So it's a cool thing. It's our third year. Really looking forward to it. Again, that's Sunday, December fourteenth. That's all I have for tonight, and I'll pass.
Thank you, Captain. And again, outstanding. First and second place out of the whole nation for like the last twelve, fourteen years. You guys just do an amazing job. Chief Poplin?
Let the record show, we did not cook any food at that last National Night Out. Congratulations, though, that's, that's epic achievement. Moving on, we are in the midst of the four-city hiring process for firefighter, paramedic, EMT, so this is something that we do annually to keep our candidate list full. So we, we've been doing it for close to half a decade now, but we do it with North Shore Fire Rescue, Wauwatosa, and West Dallas, and ourselves. So that process is going on. We'll have interviews of hopefully an abundance of candidates after the holidays. This coming week, you know, next week, we are going through the promotional process for our parent, for our lieutenant position. So we have one vacancy now and one vacancy as of January first, so we'll have two lieutenant vacancies. I have four candidates going for it. So they have a written test here on the tenth, and then a full-day assessment center with some outside agency proctors, and then I should have a list established going into the new year. So typically, and by union contract, I have to post the shift change by December first, and this year I had to tell them that I would not have a shift change, because we have two positions to fill, and it's just the timing. So everyone is eager to see the list come out for not only promotions, but so they can get on with scheduling their, their life. Water your trees and shovel your hydrants, and that's all I have. I'll pass.
Thank you, Chief. Ann?
I have something I'd like to share with all of you tonight. The City of St. Francis has been my home for almost thirty-four years, and in that time, you have become far more than coworkers, officials, or neighbors. You've become part of the story of my life. You have stood beside me through some of the most defining moments of my life, adopting our daughter, grieving for the loss of my parents, and even enduring the frightening experience of being swatted. You've also celebrated with me during the proudest milestones of my career, including the WMC Lifetime Achievement Award and the IMC Quill Award. But nothing will ever compare to the greatest honor of all, serving as your clerk treasurer since nineteen ninety-two. Throughout these years, I have had the privilege of swearing in every firefighter and police officer who currently serves our community. I've worked with three mayors, or, I'm sorry, five mayors, three city administrators, countless council members, six police chiefs, and three fire chiefs. Each relationship shaping me in ways large and small. I've also had the joy of mentoring wonderful deputy clerk treasurers who have gone on to lead other communities. Watching them grow has been one of the most rewarding parts of my career. My deepest gratitude belongs to the clerk's office. Rebecca Gagnon, Kelly Fissler, and Jamie Kenyon are not just colleagues, they are the heart of our office. Their dedication, their pride, and their steady strength have carried me through so many days. Working beside them has made every morning brighter and every challenge lighter. It is their excellence, their compassion, and their friendship that have made this decision more emotional than I have ever imagined. Working under City Administrator Mark Johnsrude has been a gift I will always treasure. Our daily morning conversations, sometimes about city business, sometimes about aliens and pyramids, have brought laughter, perspective, and the kind of mentorship that changes a career. In the ten years I've worked with him, I have grown more than in all the years before. His passion for the city is unmatched, and I will miss his stories, his leadership, and his unwavering commitment. Mayor Tutai has restored a sense of community and compassion to our offices that has touched all of us. His dedication to doing what is right, not just for residents but for employees, has reminded me why this work matters and why this city is so special. Serving under his leadership has been an honor. Whenever I travel to give presentations, I never miss the chance to brag about our common council. Hearing what other clerks experience only makes me more grateful for your respect, your support, and your belief in the people who serve this city. It is a beautiful cemetery that I began my career working with Debbie Fliss as a coworker, and will end it with her serving as an alderwoman. It is with a full heart and mixed emotions that I submit my letter of intent to retire effective May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six. Thank you all for a career filled with purpose, pride, laughter, challenges, and countless memories. Thank you for trusting me, supporting me, and walking through so many chapters of life with me. Thank you for the honor of serving as your city clerk treasurer.
Not as exciting as saving people's lives or, you know, catching bad guys, but it's the best that I can do, guys.
And on a side note, she said she's served with five mayors. There's only been eight. You've got a lot of experience and knowledge of this city. Thank you.
Now I really feel old.
Thank you for, thank you for your service. And before I put my foot in my mouth again, Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations to you, Ann. Hopefully you'll stop by from time to time to give us a snort.
Oh, I'm coming for coffee every morning.
There you go.
I'm going to sit in Mark's office.
Hard to top that, but I, I will advise that I did provide the mayor, city clerk treasurer, and city administrator with signed copies of a settlement agreement with, between the City of St. Francis and BRI One LLC, and Derek and Rebecca Deisland since our last meeting, and with that, I pass.
Thank you, Paul. Mark?
Just a reminder that the next meeting will be having a committee of the whole. It'll be in the West Conference Room, and we'll be going over the employee policy manual revisions. That's all I have.
Thank you, Steve.
Just like to wish Ann happy retirement there. Congratulations.
Oh, it's a long way off. I'm not dead yet.
I know, I know. So, and that's it, that's all I have.
Thank you, Don.
I also would like to congratulate Ann on her future. My other point is to all the folks that came here to discuss the triangle, just be, just be aware that I personally am not all that crazy about apartment complexes either. So I mean, this is, this is far from a done deal. I, there can be some changes, but I don't like apartments either. But as far as having apartment or condos as opposed to apartments, people still rent out the condos. They'll buy the condo and rent it out, and you can't stop that, you know, so. And if anybody's looking for, for a condo, Hidden Ponds is finally open after twenty-some years. And with that, I pass.
Thank you, Don. Do you really want to go after him? Debbie?
I just want to congratulate Ann, and I know the best in your life is yet to come.
Mark's a little worried, I'm just going to tell you.
Thank you, Debbie. Sarah?
I don't know what else to say. Ann, I, congratulations. I don't do really well with saying goodbye, about like six more months anyways, so that's my mom's birthday. So we'll have lots of laughs between now and then, I'm quite sure. Make some more memories, and you taught me a lot, and you'll teach me, teach me a lot more in the next six months. With that, I pass.
Thank you. Sean? Sean?
That was a lovely speech. And thank you, 'cause we don't always get that detailed gift. But I will say, you just served up six months of a roast on yourself, because you gave them plenty of opportunity to chide you for the next six months.
Oh, you don't think I'll have comebacks?
Come on. I'm gonna leave this be Ann's night, tonight, save the rest of my comments for another evening. Thank you, Ann, for the years of wonderful service.
Thanks, Sean. Captain Blunt, again, I'd like to say thank you for your department. Ever since I've been alderman or mayor, you guys have been outstanding, not just for night, National Night Out, but for everything, and for that, I'm grateful. And Ann, you forgot to mention one thing.
I?
I've known you as alderman and mayor for ten years, and I wouldn't be the mayor that I am without you constantly mentoring, telling me when I'm wrong, "No, you can't do that." Why? State statute, darn it. She's been very, very good, and it's just not me, she helps out every, all city staff and the council members, but she's been a blessing to me, she's opened up my eyes to being a politician, I had no idea what I was getting into back in 2016. And with that, I will go, we're gonna go into closed session. Ann?
We'll need a motion to convene into closed session under Wisconsin Statute nineteen-eighty-five-one-C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Item for discussion, city administrator performance evaluation.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Yep. Alderwoman Fliss?
Aye.
Alderwoman Calderon?
Aye.
Alderman Fire?
Aye.
Alderman Wadua?
Aye.
Alderman Burkner?
Aye.